Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lady, call this meeting to order at seven oh two P M. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bonk Crooks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kibba Watten.
Pete.
Here.
Prueji.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
For our President, Mayor Rezepa.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilperson.
Or Kibba Watten.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, we have a minute approval for the October third, twenty twenty two regular meeting.
So move.
Part. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. All right, next up here, we have a public comment for items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment is reserved exclusively for items that are on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for public comment at the close of the meeting as well. For all other items, we'll go to those on Zoom first, or I'm sorry, if you're on Zoom, please either under participants or reactions, use the raise hand feature. And then we will get you queued up from there. We'd ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begins with their name and address, directs all questions through me, and please limit their comments to five minutes. We'll go to folks in person first and those on the Zoom to see if there are any hands. Seeing none, we'll move right on along here. Uh, next item on the agenda, we have two appointments here. I am asking for this body's approval of my appointment of Jeff Wager to the Historical Commission and Brandon Drake to the Cultural Commission, each for terms expiring November first of twenty twenty five.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Yes.
Prueji.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Obstain.
Bonk Crooks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, next up, we have the thirty-third District Court fines, costs, and fees for September twenty twenty-two, and I will defer to our delegate, Councilwoman Bone Crooks.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the fines and costs collected on behalf of the city due from our city in the amount of five thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents due to the courts.
We've got a motion. We have support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. And next up, we have department heads and officials. Dean, did you want to take these two from engineering, Chance?
Property.
It's a, yeah, the petition to divide properties.
Uh, yeah, I I don't have, I'm trying to get my.
Oh, that's okay. I can take them then. No worries. Um, so yeah, the first item we have is from engineering, petition to divide property. Um, it's asking for a motion to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the petition to divide property at two, two, three, one, Third Street, lot sixty-four, assessors Trenton Platt, number one, T four S, R one, one, E, L six, six, P two, eight, W C R into parcel A. Two, two, three, one, Third Street and parcel B, two, two, three, seven, Third Street, submitted by M I Residential LLC.
I would still move.
Support. Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Uh, next up here, we have another petition to combine property here, asking for a motion to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission to combine property. Um, it's four thirty-eight Saint Joseph Street to be identified as west, uh, one half of a foot south, one hundred and sixteen feet of lot two forty-eight and all of lots two forty-nine and two fifty of assessors Trenton Platt, number three, submitted by Kimberly Brooks.
It's a move.
Support. Removed and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, we have, uh, from our police chief, Chief Oakley, a change of traffic control orders, twenty twenty-two dash oh two dash oh three and dash oh four from temporary to permanent. Chief.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, back on July eighteenth, uh, we discussed, uh, temporary traffic control orders. Uh, the three of them were the addition of stop signs at Waverly and Strom and Boxford and Strom to make those four-way stops. And then the removal of a stop sign at on Benson between Forest Lane and Clark Court. Uh, the ninety-day period for these temporary orders is is expired. And as far as I'm aware, we haven't had any negative feedback on these changes. So I'm here tonight asking your approval to make these permanent traffic control orders.
Some.
Support.
For.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have, uh, from our wastewater treatment plant, Superintendent Astroday, uh, two items here. Uh, first one we have is the chlorine building roof replacement.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens, department heads. How you doing? Um, the first item is the roof of the chlorine building. It's planned, needs replacing. It's about forty years old. Uh, we tried to have it repaired once. Um, was recommended to have it repaired. We obtained three quotes and we recommend to award the quote to, or the job to Holbrook Roofing, Trenton for nineteen thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars.
I would still move.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Prueji?
Yes, uh, was this a budgeted item?
It was in the Capitol, um, improvements project for a couple of years out from now.
Okay, it's just, or just prematurely getting to it. Okay.
Right. It was leaking pretty bad last time it rained, uh, so. And there is a two-year warranty or a twenty-year warranty on that. The next item that we have on the agenda is.
Oh, actually, hang on. Just, was there any further discussion there?
I'm sorry.
Now, here, okay, I just wanted to wrap that one up. So seeing none is unanimously so ordered. So there you go. Next one, emergency replacement of the raw sewage drive.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Um, the emergency replacement of the raw sewage pump drive, that's, um, it's a V F D, which is a variable frequency drive. It's a throttling device that throttles the speed of the motors, which is throttles the pumping rates of the pump. This one actually had a catastrophic failure in, well, what we've determined, found out to be a catastrophic failure. We thought it was just a failure that could be repairable. The repair company spent probably up to a thousand dollars on it so far, and they that it was gonna be pretty much unreparable at that point due to time, parts available, availability and whatnot. So they obtained, um, a surplus drive that would replace it um, in kind, and it's available within a week, and they're gonna have to ship it if we get approval tonight, and we could get that pump back and restore it at the at the plant. So that one is in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars to the Northline Industrial, and that's for the PowerFlex seven hundred drive.
I would still move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Prueji?
Yes, do you know the age of the drive that failed?
Yes, that was from two thousand and six.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, cool. Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. All right, next up here, I've got, uh, one late item for you all, uh, from myself here, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, opposition to the Riverview landfill expansion. I've got a, I'll read this here into the record. Uh, whereas the city of Riverview, Michigan, has again indicated to various local governmental agencies and their governing bodies that it is proposed and intends to expand the existing Riverview landfill site currently located along King Road in the city of Trenton, or I'm sorry, in the city of Riverview, in size and scope to accommodate new and existing customers. And whereas traffic to and from the existing landfill site, together with odors emanating therefrom, already negatively impacts surrounding roads, air quality, and environmental conditions in the immediate area adjacent to the neighborhoods adjacent there, too. Whereas it is vital that the proposed expansion does not further exacerbate the road and environmental conditions for the community and properties adjacent to the landfill. Whereas it is the additional responsibility of the city of Riverview to protect citizens of any community located adjacent to its landfill for many adverse impact and ensure their well-being as if they were their own. And whereas the city of Riverview has avail, has available to it alternate, alternate access points to the landfill site with it, within its own municipal boundaries, with roads suitable for handling the expected increase in traffic while avoiding proximity to adjacent residential neighborhoods. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Trenton does hereby oppose any expansion of the Riverview landfill and encourages implementation of the following affirmative measures. Relocating the existing and or proposed delivery, delivery entrance and or exit to the landfill site from King Road to Allen, uh, to Sibley or Allen Roads. Implement an air quality monitoring system to detect and address foul odors escaping the site, which may be, uh, deleterious to surrounding neighborhoods and adversely affect property values of homes located to the area. Conduct an in-depth traffic study to evaluate the impact to nearby residents, neighborhoods, and roads. Aggressively address the vagrant trash that continually drifts from the current site and from inbound customers dumping at the site. Be it further resolved that the city of Trenton remains committed to working with government and business leaders at all levels across the region to find tangible, long-term development solutions to alleviate economic and financial concerns about the closure. Be it further resolved that this petition be additionally served on the county of Wayne and the state of Michigan, the Wayne County Executive, the Director of Land Resource Management Division of the Department of Public Services, the Wayne County Solid Waste Board. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk to hereby authorize and directed to execute and deliver this resolution of the city of Trenton to the persons and entities identified above. So to request a motion to approve this.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all very much, and I'll talk more about that, uh, other business there, too. Uh, were there any other late items tonight, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, so we'll go to our disbursements and statements, and then our reports. So I will defer to our Mayor Proton, Councilwoman Pay.
Thank you so much. I would like to move to approve the authorized disbursements dated October seventeenth of twenty twenty-two in the amount of one million sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and forty-two cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
I'd also like to move to approve the financial summary of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, schedule of investments and cash on hand, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the City Beautiful Commission minutes dated September eighth, twenty twenty-two, the Civic Commission minutes of September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the Fire Department monthly report, September twenty twenty-two, and the Police Department monthly report of September twenty twenty-two.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Alrighty, so we'll go to other council business here, and I've got, uh, a few things for everyone tonight, and I guess I'm gonna kind of go in reverse order. I like, uh, bad news first, generally. Um, and then get, uh, to the actual happier things here, too. So, uh, the one thing, obviously one, and I guess, uh, my blood pressure talking about is much lower than it has been over the last two, three weeks, um, but uh, the one thing that, uh, of course, has been at the forefront of our minds last couple of weeks in particular, as if it hasn't for the last several decades. Um, but that, uh, as expected, uh, October fifteenth has come and passed, and the Riverside Hospital site is not pad-ready, um, as per the court agreement we had with the receiver. Now, I think that, uh, as everyone following along has seen us here approve, I think now twice, um, the main holdup for this at this point is, and it, it is almost baffling to say, um, is Wayne County. Uh, the, uh, developer, and I'll, I'll have Dean elaborate on this a little bit, but the contractors have been going through the permitting process, uh, with the state. Um, but as we have approved here, uh, Wayne County has committed a million and a half dollars, um, to the city of Trenton, um, and a backwards, uh, capture of, uh, TIF tax dollars, um, on the back end here, but to go towards the demolition, um, as part of their ARPA funding. Uh, that money was, uh, we had submitted for that project over a year ago at this point. Um, we had gotten conditional approval at several levels. Um, we're told it was going to be appropriated in the spring. Um, I think it was March, then May, then July, then September, then October, and now the most recent date we heard was October twentieth. Um, that is coming up this Thursday, uh, as of at least in about an hour and a half ago when I last checked, uh, the commission agenda was still not posted. Um, so cannot confirm that, um, and they have also told us that about four consecutive meetings, um, that it would be in front of the commission, uh, then. I've talked to our commissioner about it multiple times. Um, he is, uh, just as upset as all of us are about it, um, because it has not gotten to their level. Um, so it is, uh, and I, there is some comfort, I suppose, in the fact that it isn't just us that's waiting on this money in Trenton. Um, Wayne County has not appropriated over three hundred million dollars of their ARPA funding. So literally, um, every other city, uh, and township in the, in Wayne County is, uh, facing that same situation, albeit not with the same level of, uh, ISO, um, and pressing issue, I think, that, uh, we've all seen, uh, come to fruition here. So we have, uh, been very, very patient, but yes, just have to be very blunt about it. This is a situation that Wayne County has just sat on their hands about for way, way, way too long. If anyone, uh, would be interested, um, in reaching out, uh, as well as have, uh, most of us around this table, um, very regularly. Um, and just want to politely nudge the fact that Trenton really needs this ARPA money to get this huge, huge, uh, development project underway to tear down this ISO, um, to get rid of this, uh, hazard. Um, three, one, three, two, two, four, zero, two, eight, six, might not be a bad number to call, um, Duane County Executive's office. Uh, any extra pressure certainly helps. Again, uh, certainly polite nudging, uh, very much encouraged. Um, but I think, uh, to really, really show what a big deal this is for our community. I mean, I think it's one thing um, for us to beat that drum and say so all the time, but, uh, squeaky wheel gets the re, grease and, uh, clothes models don't get fed. So we're really keeping up on that. Um, and then I know, uh, Dean and Alan will have a meeting, uh, soon with the judge, um, about, uh, to get updates on the project, a status conference, and, uh, Dean, I don't know if you want to talk about the status conference and, uh, also about the permitting process, uh, as well that they've been going through as, uh, the, the owners of the site have been going through that with Eagle.
Sure, Mayor. So another, uh, another component of this project has been, uh, a little over six hundred thousand dollar grant from Eagle that was, uh, given to the property owner uh, to use for hazard abatement and asbestos removal, um, which that process is, is started. Um, there's notifications and stuff that have to be made to the state. Um, ten and thirty days, depending on the activity, uh, that's supposed to go on. So that, the, the process for getting that has actually, um, has, is underway. The, um, and it's the, the money, uh, the funding has been already secured from the state. So there's, um, you know, they were able to turn it around pretty quickly and, and make it all happen, which the, the, these are all numbers that are relative and tied to the size of the TIF that's, um, uh, granted on the property. Um, the the regular permitting with the site, um, they've, uh, engaged their contractor, um, and the permitting process has begun, but it's not simply they show up at building and engineering and, and are granted a permit. So, uh, there is some other things that have to go along. Soil erosion is the first step, um, with any demolition to make sure that's done. And then I anticipate the full demolition permit, um, being issued, but, um, that is all contingent on, um, the funding being secured because, of course, you can't go back and ask for reimbursement. You have to have the money or the authorization to spend the money upfront. So hopefully, that will, uh, happen. And, uh, and we'll be able to go from there, but I, the, it's moving incredibly slow, but it is moving. And then, um, November fifteenth, we have a status conference with, um, uh, the judge, and, uh, I, I anticipate over, once again, over the next thirty days, there will be more steps forward and hopefully less, uh, steps standing still. I won't say they're backward steps, but we're all equally frustrated. The cleanup at the site, that part of it is, uh, that situation is stable. Um, we haven't had any other, um, ex, extension of the issue. In fact, uh, everything we have back so far makes it appear that, uh, the underground contamination may not be as bad as, uh, first anticipated or, or expected. So that's it.
Great. So we will, uh, hopefully have more positive updates, uh, over the next couple of meetings, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that, um, until Wayne County comes through with that money. So, uh, next thing here, uh, as we just addressed with the, uh, our resolution here about the, uh, Riverview landfill expansion, uh, folks living within the vicinity, uh, vicinity, um, should have received postcards in the north end of town. Um, right now, um, I guess, yeah, for those that, uh, didn't, yes, the Riverview is, uh, going forward with their application, uh, again, uh, for, uh, expanding their landfill. Um, I believe this is their third time in about five and a half years now, um, that they've gone forth with this. Um, they're pretty much, uh, you know, what we dealt with, uh, two, a year and a half, two years ago. It's almost the exact same there. Uh, they refiled their application. Um, they were given a list of things by the Facility Inclusion Committee to more or less, uh, revise or improve upon, um, from the last go around. And I guess my kind of, uh, you know, summation of their responses to that was, uh, here are the reasons why we don't have to do any of those things. Um, so I'm, uh, going to be as on top of the resolution that we, uh, unanimously passed here, um, this evening, um, in opposition to that on behalf of the city of Trenton. I know I'll be, uh, submitting a letter as well. Um, and then once they do get the details locked in, we'll be trying to attend the meeting, um, just to schedule permitting. Um, but right now, the public comment period is open until November seventh. Um, for anyone interested in commenting on the proposed expansion of the Riverview landfill, um, any letters can be addressed to the Wayne County Facility Inclusion Committee, um, at thirty-six hundred Commerce Court. That's Wayne, Michigan, four, eight, one, eight, four, or they can also be sent via, uh, via email to E S G help at WayneCounty.com. Again, the, uh, public comment period, um, for the proposed Riverview landfill expansion goes until November seventh. Um, letters can be addressed to the Wayne County Facility Inclusion Committee at thirty-six hundred Commerce Court, Wayne, Michigan, four, eight, one, eight, four. Uh, more emails may be sent, uh, to E S G help at WayneCounty.com. So would definitely encourage, uh, any and all folks interested, um, to submit those comments. Again, just like I said before, clothes models don't get fed, um, and so we gotta do what we gotta do. Uh, next up, I know, uh, last council meeting, we had a question from Mr. Mills about, uh, abandoned railroad tracks, particularly the tracks on King. Um, I went by there. I don't know if it was the following day, but at least that week, um, to check that out, too. And it does seem like that there are tracks where, um, the track line has been pretty much removed, north and southbound. Um, but the bulk of what actually remains is what goes right across the road, and of course, they are, um, very much in disrepair. Um, so I know Alan's been looking into this, uh, as well, and Dean's contacted Wayne County, too, um, given that it is a county road. Um, to see what we can do, um, to help facilitate conversation with, uh, the owners of the tracks, the county, and just to ideally get them removed because they are very, uh, very obviously abandoned, um, at that point. So hopefully we'll make some progress on that, uh, sooner rather than later. Um, and then on to the, uh, more positive, uh, portions of my comments tonight. I do want to give, uh, a shout out to the Parks and Rec Department and, uh, all the volunteers that had a hand in the Halloween walk. Um, really, uh, cool to see some of the pictures, um, of everything there, um, for, uh, you know, everything that went on, seeing that back in town, all the folks that were able to come, uh, by and, uh, do that through Westfield is very cool. Um, also want to congratulate, um, at, uh, as of last week, I believe, uh, Trenton native Andy Green, and I signed a one-day contract, uh, with the, uh, New Jersey Devils to retire as a devil, um. But, uh, coming, uh, to a close on a sixteen-year NHL career, uh, coming from Trenton. So something we were all very proud of for a very long time. Um, saw them make a couple playoff runs and, uh, even make it to being the captain of the Devils. And so, uh, very, very cool and something, uh, that we can all celebrate and be very proud of here in Trenton. Um, and then last, but certainly not least, have to wish a very happy belated birthday to Timber. Uh, we just had her birthday the other day.
Thanks.
And, uh, since we won't be here for the next go-around, too, um, a happy upcoming birthday to Wendy as well. So.
And to you.
And you, too.
Yeah. We'll see.
Thank you.
Yes, but, uh, happy birthday to you both. Had to close it out, um, with the best news imaginable there. So we'll, uh, go on now to the rest of council for their comments, uh, now that I've, uh, done all my, uh, blabbering here. So tonight, we are gonna get started with, uh, Councilman Prueji.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say a few things. First of all, I want to thank, uh, Chief Oakley for letting me do a couple ride-alongs. Uh, the reason I did that, I wanted to see what, uh, potential challenges the police officers were having, either with equipment, staffing, um, were they covering enough in the neighborhoods? But I will tell you that I would like to thank, uh, Officers Scapaniac and Bedson, and what was interesting was that they had two different approaches, nothing glaring, but at the end, the same result was there, that they always had the safety of the residents of the city first and foremost. They were never um, sitting there doing nothing. They were always proactively finding something, going to this location, this street, doing this. It was, it was amazing the work that they actually put in, and I, I want to thank you for that. Uh, from, from that ride, I had conversations with both officers, and one of the things we've already taken care of, which is the ventilation. There were some concerns that there are a lot of allergies because the ventilation was, uh, dirty, and that's been taken care of. So, uh, Chief, I just want to say thank you for that opportunity. Uh, I also like to say, uh, thank you. I also like to say thank you to Tim Beaker and his team. It was a very nice Halloween walk. My older kids didn't remember it, but it was great that we were able to take the grandkids to it. And I just want to say thank you to that. I also want to put a shout out to the team from DiePac. The young adults did a wonderful job in performing the skits for the Halloween walk. You know, it's nice to see that we have local support in that project and those young adults did a very good job. Outside of that, it's also October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, henceforth my pink. And I always encourage, as I have, since I've been on council, find a cause to get invested in. It doesn't always have to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It could be any challenging, life-changing event for those who are less fortunate than ourselves. So find that cause, support it. And hopefully you find something that you're not afflicted or family members afflicted with. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Actually, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Von Crox.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, you were speaking about the railroads and it just brought to mind. Over the weekend, I got caught by a few trains around town. Any more conversations, discussions, anything with Wayne County or about the overpass or underpass? Nothing seems to be getting done anywhere. So.
On Allen Road.
Well, I'm just wondering, is the money earmarked, you know, for that same location? Is, are things going forward? I mean, what, what do people have to look forward to in the future?
Yeah. So on Allen Road, I saw an update about two weeks ago, I think, that they were waiting for the final approval from, I, I think it was Eagle for the stormwater retention for the drainage portion of it. But every, they were just, the sign offs on that and they're just supposed to be getting started. I mean, I, I feel like it's just like any other big project like that where it ends up starting six months a year after they say it's going to. But so that was the last update that I heard was that they're just waiting on the final permitting, but everything's supposed to go as planned. I did probably about three weeks ago, speak with both Darren Camilleri and Pat Harrington separately about grade separation funding and just the extra plug in there. I know over the course of, well, depends how the next few weeks go with the legislative session. But there's still about $7 billion in supplemental money the state is looking to appropriate. And I told them we are more than happy to have some of that money appropriated for the grade separation fund here. I know it was the framework of it was passed before for a statewide fund for that, but no money was appropriated for it at the time still. And so that's one of those things that they're supposed to negotiate, quote unquote, over the next couple of months. But no prospects one way or the other, at least that I've heard since then, whether that's actually going to come to fruition. So fun politics of an election cycle. So.
Yeah, it comes down to that, I guess. Well, it's just, you know, it's a shame because Trenton did all the engineering studies and we have all the renderings. We're the direct link to the hospital. It's just a shame that we can't get some money earmarked for Trenton down Fourth Street for an underpass or overpass because that's really where it needed to be. I know Kyle fought for it. We all did. And it's a shame that we're the sitting ducks here that, you know, don't get that direct route to the hospital. So I think we need to make some calls. And I think we need to get a little more proactive with, with pursuing this some more. I mean, I know years ago, 12 or 13 million dollars it was, was appropriated to that. And Woodhaven, you know, got the federal, federal money. When they didn't use it right away, that money went back into the coffers at the federal level. So I'd like to see us pursue something in the future for that. I mean, really, it's, it's a life or death thing. You know, and our residents deserve it.
Yep. And like you said, too, having the renderings done, I know Dean had did dust those off a few months back as we were talking about it. Because, you know, one of the, when those projects get deliberated upon, I mean, one of the things they always say is, you know, is it shovel ready type of thing? And it's one thing that we are able to fall back on is saying that, hey, yes, we've already done the study. Here's some, I mean, there would be some minor updates needed. But Dean had already reached out to the firm that done it, had done it before. And they said that it, you know, didn't seem like it'd be a big lift on their end if need be. So yeah, the, the meat and potatoes is there. It's just, yeah, making sure that we can actually get that coming this direction. Yep.
Good. That'll be great. All right. Really, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti.
I'm going to start out with also applauding Tim and his group and DiePac kids for what I see was a great Halloween walk. It was cool to have it back. I will tell you, 30 years ago, I might've been a character in there when I first got hired for the city. Because, you know, when you're on probation as a firefighter, they make you do certain things. But it was great to see that. And it's, it was nice to see it put out there on what we're going to do for traffic flow and things like that. Tell the public ahead of time. And that's great how you, the police department all worked together to get that done in the schools and everything. Because, yeah, it was a football game day. And around here, football's a big deal this year. So it was nice to see that. One thing I do need from you, Stephen, if you don't mind, since you have the only camera. Along with Nelson's comment about Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the Trenton Fire Department is selling those shirts for $20 apiece. And it goes to their fire department charities, which they make donations to help out families in town, Christmas and different things they need. So you can get those at the fire station right there on Maple, 200 Maple, just knock on the door. And the guys will be more than happy to come and assist you with them. And want to thank them today because I used their services again today and they did a great job as always. Kind of biased because that's where I came from, but it's nice to see those young guys out there and they, they have no problem showing up and just helping people. Even though they don't take them to the hospital, they're taking care of them. And I think that's a great thing that we do for the city. On your note of the illustrious dump hill landfill, whatever I call it, all those numbers and email, they're going to be on the city's website. So people can find them and do all that. Okay. Why? It's because, you know, a lot of people aren't going to see this. And then I think they need to know about it and get it done. Because we do, we have to figure out something with that. I don't know how many times the county is going to let them come back and keep doing this over and over and over when they know they're the only ones that want it. I mean, it's not a benefit to anybody. Yes, we have to figure out how to help and keep the city afloat there too, which that landfill does for them. But they better start working on something else because we can't afford to let that thing keep growing like it does. Besides that, that's it for me.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll definitely make sure all that's, that public comment info is on the website. And we should probably get our resolution posted on our Facebook page too, just so folks know. Make note of that. Cool, cool. All right. Next up, we will go to Councilwoman Pete.
Thank you. I did have it on my list to wish you both a happy birthday. So I'll do that again. I'd also like to thank the Parks and Rec programs for, for all the programs you offer is not just Halloween, you know, walk. But there was a neighbor who posted, and after, you know, the event, kind of a post. And this person said that they, this is why they stay in Trenton. They loved it for their kids and all the experiences they have. And it was just a glowing review. It was about a page long, but I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just let you know it was there. So that was nice to see. Also wanted to mention the lights downtown. They are glowing orange and they look really cool for the season. It's a great color for downtown. So thanks for keeping up with the seasons and making that exciting for us. We did host the slow roll through Trail Town and helped with a lot of help from the Rotary. We had 62 people sign up. We had a few people not show and a few more people show up when we rolled out. The weather was beautiful. You know, thanks for the police department for some assistance and hopefully we can do more. We had a lot of feedback on that and want, these people want to do this twice a week. And I think I'm about to buy some more boxes of hair dye for that. But at least maybe once a month they get rolling and maybe we'll add it weekly. And maybe they can just roll themselves out and have some fun. My tires were a little low and so was my energy, but I made it. Also wanted to thank the Historical Commission. I know you're here tonight, but you always post a monthly reminder of things that had happened historically in Trenton. So I posted that on my Facebook page and already got some wow reviews like, oh my gosh, we had to go to the river to get water in 1889. And some really cool information is always posted there. So thank you for that. Always fun to read. Let's see. Oh, speaking of the firefighters charities, I believe they donated to the NHS drive that is going on out in the city hall here. Remember the kids came and spoke to us and they were really thankful. They did get some women's products that, you know, can help their, their drive. And they were very, very thankful. So they do give back to the community, of course. Also wanted to mention that on November 2nd, from 6:00 to 7:45 at the Trenton Memorial Library, the U of M Toddman School of Urban Planning and Design and something else, I can't see with my glasses are, they have been studying our city for about, well, I'd say a little under a year now. We're kind of a case study for them of all the, you know, things that could happen to a city. We kind of represent them. So basically they're studying our local history. They're studying our new zoning ordinance. And they're studying about the Greenways and the Great Lakes Way project. And through the Community Foundation are funded for this class that is now in its second phase. So we have a new group of students who are working on coming up with ideas of how to link the Greenways and the Blue Ways to the waterfront. And since we have 36,000 feet of waterfront in the city of Trenton, they thought we would be a great case study to see what the future might look on our waterfront. So there have been surveys that have been posted. They are going to host an event to give out information about their findings so far. And they also want to hear from us. So it's somewhat of a public meeting as well to get interaction with what we think is important for our city to move forward. So please join us on Wednesday, November 2nd from 6:00 to 7:45 at the library. And I believe they have a follow-up meeting or a second meeting also November 19th, which is a Saturday, in case you can't come during the week. Speaking of Trail Town, I just wanted to announce that there is another lady who is battling cancer, Al Petrie's wife. He's a major supporter of the trails. They are having a ride for Debbie coming up. It is posted on my Facebook page. So again, if you want to give back, and you, and you like riding and you liked our slow roll, they're also doing a slow roll, but this one is in Flat Rock. Also wanted to mention that the NHS students are doing a rake a difference on Saturday, November 12th. So if you have any neighbors who happen to be shut-ins or happen to be seniors who can't rake their leaves anymore, there is a phone number to call, 734-365-0584. Or that person or that home to be signed up to get their leaves raked for the season. There is also a seroputist application for scholarships, not just for lady students, but also, you know, lady students who are also adults. There's two different opportunities to fund their, your education with awards of $2,500 or I think it's $800. And I think that might be everything on my list. So just please tune into my Facebook page or try and post all the great things that the city is up to and doing and supporting our, our residents. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. We'll go to our other elected officials now here. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Sure. Yes, I would like to mention that absentee ballots are available for the general election in the clerk's office. The clerk's office will be open on Saturday, November 5th for absentee voting. The next regular council meeting is Monday, November 7th at 7:00 PM. And the general election is on Tuesday, November 8th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then lastly, there will be a study session immediately following this meeting tonight. And that is to discuss the Trenton Historical Museum.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, our assessor, Ms. Barnett. Do you have anything this evening? Oh, okay. Nothing from her. All right. And so we'll go to our treasurer, Mr. McCullough.
I'm happy to report nothing. I have nothing for the council, but thank you for, for all you do. And hopefully I'll have something next time.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mike. We appreciate it. All right. We'll go to our department heads here. Do any of our department heads have anything this evening? We'll go to anyone in person first and then those on Zoom second here. So that's Tim Beaker, Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate a thank you that you guys all said, and great job done for the stars of the show from the Halloween walk, which was DiePac. The DiePac students and participants made a wonderful event. So thank you to them. Thank you to our DPS. Thank you to our police department, auxiliary police and the Parks and Rec staff. They, they put on a great show this weekend. So. And thank you guys for all recognizing.
Cool. Thank you very much. All right. We've got our DPS Director, Kevin Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update for any residents watching at home now that falls here. That means our curbside leaf collection is going to start next Monday. These maps are located, you can find them in pretty much any city building. You can find them on the DPW Facebook page, the city's website. They're everywhere. We will start and section one will be west of the Frank and Poet Drain in between Van Horn and King Road. That'll be next week. And then after that, section two is everything east of the Frank and Poet. And then followed by section three, which will be downtown, north end of town off of Sibley. Valley Sub in the south end down there and then Typhus Sub and Lathrop Sub. Everybody's going to get two rounds, a pickup, two weeks of pickup. And then we'll do one final city cleanup at the end, which is December 12th through the 16th. You can also use your green yard waste carts until the week of December 5th, weather permitting. If you had a bunch of snow, that may stop sooner. But other than that, just a reminder too, for residents at home that rake their piles out in the street, please don't put sticks, pumpkins, hay bales, that kind of thing in your leaf piles. It really causes problems with our leaf vacuums, plugs us up and just delays us. So you can still put that stuff in your yard waste cart and we'll take it from there. That's it.
Thank you. Good, Councilman.
How are we doing with recycling stuff?
Recycling is going well. We're still averaging 30 tons every week we pick up. We're still seeing a good 20% reduction in trash going to the landfill. So it's, it's.
But I mean, it's clean and stuff, but you know, we're not having a lot of issues with a lot of it being.
Most of it's clean. I got a report from the driver today. He said that today there was more styrofoam than he's seen yet. So that's one of the biggest misconceptions of styrofoam being recyclable and it is not. So please throw that stuff in your trash barrel. But, and that's going well.
Cool. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you very much. All right, Chief Oakley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to put something out there for the public and for you, just in the event you get any calls, complaints, anything. At Headkey School, they changed their, their bus drop off route. So the buses now are going through the loop of the parking lot of the school where they previously would do drop offs on Meadowlark. So now that the buses are going through the lot, parents are moving to drop off their kids either on Meadowlark or on Westfall. And Westfall is the, is on the south side of the school property and it's, it's creating a huge log jam over there. So we expect to institute a temporary traffic order there in the next week or so to restrict parking on Westfall from Meadowlark all the way over to Highview. We'll be allowing parking just on the north side of Westfall. So just along the, the school side of the street. That'll hopefully allow traffic to flow smoothly. So again, we'll be posting that and enforcing it over the next couple of weeks. And like any other temporary traffic order, we'll monitor it for 90 days. See how it goes and then probably bring it back to this body for approval to make it permanent.
Yeah, I had also seen a comment about somebody worried about sidewalks and that they weren't going to be able to get their kids, you know, without having to go through the snow. And they mentioned, what can the city do about that? So you might be getting some calls about that. I don't know if that's a city thing or a school thing or a joint effort. If that's going to be a permanent, you know, change for them, you know, how do we safely walk our kids through the, you know, up and I guess back from the doors? That's just what I had seen. And somebody had asked what the city could do. So I'm like, oh boy, here we go. And then are you going to be able to put out some kind of Facebook post for that as well to share it? I think, because I wrote it all down, but I think it'd be better if you, you know, had some explanation for it. These people are.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll post that. And.
Sorry, there's several parent pages that I could share it to.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get word out in the next couple of days before we start, you know, enforcing.
Cool. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And the other department heads wishing to speak. Your rock, paper, scissors. All right. See you none. We'll go to public comment here. Anyone wishing to speak on the Zoom would ask us to raise hand function under either. under either participants or reactions. Um, we'll go to folks in person first and then those on the Zoom. I don't know why you get queued up. We asked if anyone wishing to speak, uh, begins with their name and address directs all questions through me, um, and limits their comments to five minutes. Right. Not seeing any hands that will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered for adjournment at seven forty-seven P M. And nobody go anywhere. So we'll start the study session right away here too then. All right. Uh, the resolution that we passed. All right. You guys all ready to just get started? You guys all getting ready to get started? Remember, as I said, feel free if you want to go up to the podium or anything too, it'll be easier for everyone to hear you. So we'll, uh, say, yeah, well, anyone that doesn't want to stick around, we, we won't hold you to it, but we'll, uh, call this study session to order at seven forty-eight P M. here uh, to discuss, uh, the Historical Commission, um, and Historical, uh, Museum here. So we've got some items passing out.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Alrighty. Well, feel free. Yeah, take, uh, the floor is all yours. We will take it right, uh, right to you guys. And then I guess, yeah, as you speak, as if you want to do introductions and all that stuff too. I don't know if you're each three gonna speak or how, how you plan on it, but floor is all yours.
Okay. Uh, if you can hear me, my name is Judith Sharan, and I'm the chairperson for the Historical Commission. Uh, we've got Jeff Wager here, so Commissioner, and Richard Hidzinski, no, Hidzinski, also a commissioner. There's others that could not be here tonight, wish they could have been. Uh, we're, we're, uh, working to bring the museum into, uh, um, current presentation. We have been traditionally since nineteen sixty-five when it opened, uh, a slice in time kind of a place, a lot of Americana, uh, and we're changing that whole concept to be exhibit-driven because the intention is to tell Trenton's story and Trenton alone, not U.S. story. Uh, it's Trenton's story and we are, uh, collecting and, and sorting through and, and, uh, exhibiting things that pertain to, uh, there's different, um, areas that we have divided into. Government is one. You might see yourself in the exhibit somewhere someday. Uh, the police, uh, schools, businesses, sports, um, organizations, people. Um, and as it comes up, other areas of focus down the line, but it's exhibit, uh, cases and exhibits that tell things that have occurred in Trenton as it developed and as it is currently. We have many items that are strictly antique kind of things, not associated with Trenton in any way, other than that they're a, a neat chair or a neat table or, or something of that variety. But it does not pertain to Trenton's story and we need to deaccession those items. They are kind of taking up space that we could use otherwise. And so that presents a problem. The deaccessioning process is, is been a real issue. Different, we have been unable to really get anyone that could come in and give us an evaluation of what we have and what possibly it is worth and could bring us on the open market and tried several, um, directions to go. And we've gotten one person, he's the owner of Motor City Antiques who said, uh, I don't really want to do this. This is not my thing. But as a favor, if you send me pictures, I will do a few things and tell you what the value, I think my opinion is, the value of what the item is. He's the only one that has given us any kind of, uh, positive. Uh, we don't get callbacks and I've called many people short of calling Do Michelle, which, uh, starts at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to come into an appraisal. And that's just not practical. Any rate, that's been a, a problem. So in the meantime, we're storing a bunch of stuff that we don't really need to keep. And that's become a problem. Storage has been an issue even without figuring out what to do with all this extra, uh, artifacts that we have. They're, they're bulky. Couches. There's a potbelly stove that needs to go. There's, uh, big items like that that just are taking up space and, and we have to figure out how to, how to dispose of them. Uh, we have, um, a carriage shed, which like is, uh, akin to an oversized garage. And that's kind of what it is. It's cement floor, walls, two big doors that we can go in and out of, uh, that are like garage doors. Uh, there's a window on the one side that is, uh, rotted. A good wind comes through and I think the window will fall out. And the suggestion is instead of a window, putting a, an actual door in that space like a, like you would use a door going in your house. That would make it much easier to get in and out of the building if we could make it into, um, an all-season kind of a usable building. We could use it for storage if it is temperature controlled, which means bringing in heating and cooling and, uh, insulating and drywall and construction things of that ilk. There are things stored in there right now. I have no business being in there. It's, it's destructive to paper. It's destructive to furniture and without controlled temperature, it's a problem. And we don't have space in the house. We really don't. At any rate, we're asking if you would please help us, um, simplify the deaccession process. You folks are, are need, we need your permission to deaccession things. And, and we are currently, uh, making that list, compiling that list and trying to get some kind of sense of what the value is of it. Our interest is to get as much uh, out of it as we can. We're not going into giving things away. We need, we would take the monies and invest it back into the museum, other artifacts or improvements, maintenance, that type of thing. Um, the packet that I gave you, uh, I believe the first page, um, so there is a page in there. It's, it's a listing out of, of things that, uh, we would like to do on, on the, if you flip it over, it's, it talks about the carriage shed and what we'd like to do with the carriage shed. I'm sorry if I sound like I'm rambling. I'm really nervous.
No, you're okay. Don't worry. One bit there's, we're nice, I promise.
Okay. Uh, but the carriage shed is, is really a big issue and it's an expensive issue. We have some monies that were given to us, um, through an inheritance. And, and our proposal is to use some of that money to really make the, the carriage shed into an actual usable building. Uh, we would use it for storage. We would use it for, uh, a wor- a workshop. Um, we were told by the city, a, a city inspector that if we were going to have any public people in there, non-city employee people in there, that it would also have to have a bathroom, but that's not our intention to, uh, make it into that kind of a building. Um, but we do need it for storage. We do need it for workspace. And listed on this, on this, uh, sheet, uh, is pretty much the, the things that would need to be done to make that a usable building. And we have some estimates that we've gotten over time. They're old. They would have to be updated, uh, because they're, they're either more than a year old or they're six months old and, uh, but we, it, it's a, the numbers that are in there are ones that we have gotten. So you have sort of a figure to go by. Uh, inflation is killing us. Uh, we did get an estimate, for instance, on replacing the side window with a door. And back in, uh, the summer, the estimate was, uh, in the four hundred ballgame. No. Was it six hundred, Jeff? Six hundred. And now that same door is over a thousand dollars. So that's kind of an issue. You gotta act on it while it's there and only going up. Um, in addition, we, we have a need, a serious need of a proper cataloging program just to know what we really do have. We have a, a homemade version of a catalog program. And I can tell you, it's, it's very difficult to use, not impossible, but very, uh, laborious to get the, the information we need out of it. And there is a standard, um, cataloging program that, that museums across the nation use. And it's, uh, because we're a member of a, a museum group, we get a discounted price. And, and that one is very interactive and, and very user-friendly. Uh, and that's, uh, on the front page under office. Um, it's called past, I get this wrong all the time, past perfect, not past present, past perfect. And it, and it runs for us discounted price, a little over six hundred dollars, regularly eight hundred. And that's something we could really, really use, but it also requires, um, a computer capable to handle, uh, that. So we're looking for a computer that's dedicated, won't be online, but a dedicated computer to using this particular program. We're looking for a, a printer and a scanner and also, uh, an attachment to that program. That's a barcode reader and maker so that we can, um, keep track of the artifacts. There's, there's a lot. When they moved the artifacts out of the museum, uh, it filled the back end of a, um, semi. There's, there's just a lot. And there's little things and there's big things. And we do want to get rid of some of the bigger items that are taking up space and, and just try to organize better. Uh, but anyway, those are office needs. And the scanner uh, that we're asking for is not your regular buy it at Sam's Club. It's, it's one that would read newspapers and, and, and magazines and larger, larger things that could be scanned. Uh, Flat Rock currently has one that they've had maybe for five years, six years now. And, uh, some of the other museums in the area have, have gone to that same thing. Um, it's a specialty one and that's what we're looking for. Uh, have I forgotten anything, Jeff?
No, I, but I did think, you know, that we could stress that the change in the focus on the museum is a result of former mayor Stacks reading the museum. And if you come to the museum, uh, when we reopen, uh, you'll see three rooms that, uh, will have artifacts in it, Trenton artifacts that will help tell Trenton's story. One of the things that we plan on doing is to publish a newsletter. Uh, we also would like to put some historic markers around town. You'll need some financial assistance in that. We're not gonna go with the state markers. We're gonna go with our own markers. We think we've been for a lot less money. We all have control over what goes on in markers. But we'd like to build that well, but we'll need some financial assistance for that. Uh, I have a little bit of background with the markers was the three historical markers that you see up now. Uh, the result of, uh, when I was with the, uh, Historical Society, those were the three markers that, that we put. Uh, hopefully we can find, uh, some sponsors that will be willing to front the, of the cost of the markers. And, and as we did with the Historical Society, we give a little sponsors line at the, at the bottom of the markers. Uh, for our efforts and, you know, in helping to save Trenton's history. But Trenton has a, a, uh, a, uh, unique history as probably all communities do. Uh, but we need to tell our story. For so many years, it's been untold. Uh, we need to do a better job of figuring it out. And I think that will maybe help those foundations and when people understand the, what they see around town and what the community wants to do. Uh, I'm happy to see the two axes homes now been repurchased and hopefully going to be, uh, many things. But we have, uh, we have markers around town. Uh, we're looking to maybe put a marker right here at the, at the, at the city hall that will explain the, uh, the beginnings and the progression of, of Trenton's history. Uh, certainly the, uh, uh, the marker for the first, world's first traffic lines here in town need to be recognized. Uh, the first A and W of Michigan needs to be recognized. Uh, the church boatyard needs to be recognized. The church field electric automobile needs to be recognized. These are all important things to our history. And so that's going, that's going to be our project. Uh, I'm going right now. Our focus is on the museum and getting things going. Uh, we've had a couple of hurdles to come, overcome with a, with a leaky roof on a couple of occasions, but, uh, we've got that solved now and, um, but our biggest hurdle is finding a way to deaccession, uh, the artifacts, whether or not artifacts, it's the Americana that's been accumulated over the years to that museum. Uh, there's no meaning, no relevance to, uh, Trenton's history. And going along with, uh, um, former mayor Stacks breaking for the museum, it's the assignment design. So hopefully when we're all through and, and done, that people will be able to come to a museum and learn about Trenton's history and enjoy about Trenton's history. Uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, if the schools restart their school newsletter, that we might be able to put a little column in their newsletters so that we can get a little plug for, uh, for Trenton history, at least do something for Trenton School History. But those are kind of like our main, gonna be our main focus going down the road. There's so much to do and a lot of stuff that have been done years ago. Uh, as we always say, so much to do and so little time to do it. But, uh, uh, we're gonna come up with a plan and we're gonna make it workable. And hopefully with council's, uh, support, uh, we can get the word out for, uh, for Trenton's history. Hope, hopefully we'll make you proud.
So does anyone have any question here, Councilwoman Bun Crooks?
Um, yeah, I know that, um, you know, Kyle and I talked many times about some type of fundraising for the Historical Museum to keep that, you know, and they, we just had it all painted and everything else and it looks nice, but, um, would you guys consider having some type of a citywide fundraiser where, you know, maybe a gala of some sort and even tagging along with a, a, uh, garage sale, historical museum garage sale where, you know, people, you could sell some of these artifacts as, as part of the fundraiser, have a gala, have something, you know, to where it would raise money for all this.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. That's what we've been considering the, uh, the moving to, to raise money.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that, you know, that we're focused on now is, is just getting things in, in place.
Right. Decide what is worth salvaging for the museum, categorizing that. I know Kyle was into wanting that done.
So the biggest goal is to getting a, uh, an appraisal that is-
Right, fair.
Uh, what we're concerned about is the higher appraiser, we've had, what our cheapest estimate is what fifteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred dollars for a certified appraiser to come out and, and do an appraisal on our artifacts. So our thinking is, you know, is that, that's money not well spent.
Right.
And that is money, monies received from what we're getting rid of, uh, might not even fund the fifteen hundred dollars for, for certified appraisal. We've been in contact with other museums and other historical societies. Many of them, not many, but a few of them offer their artifacts to other museums first.
Mm-hmm.
If not, uh, many of them just recommend putting them on something like eBay or Marketplace, uh, and getting like a, uh, a PayPal account and doing- there's, there's, there's some drawbacks to that. there's, there's, there's some drawbacks to that, but it seems like it would be a workable thing as time moves forward. And we get rid of the block of our things that we need to get rid of now.
Right.
And in the future, as we, our collection expands and we take the upstairs and we start putting artifacts up there and taking the Americana and getting rid of that upstairs. Kind of like something that'll be in place that will be easier for us. We still need to, you know, send you our, our, our items.
Our list.
And de-ascension, so you know, you can look at them.
Right.
But we need to come up with a way that's cost effective and actually kind of something that we can our stuff and do it, do it like in the future. We've talked to other museums about the artifacts that they have and their approximate work. And most of them say there's just a limited market out there for it. That's why they offered to like other museums. But even like our old sofas and settees, you know, from the Victorian days. They're not in very good shape. Other museums, saying, you know, they, where there are similar items, they've sold them and de-ascension them, they've only received twenty-five to fifty, fifty dollars on them, so that there's not really a big market out there. As far as I know, we, when I was on the commission back in the nineties, we had a graduate come in and did a, did an appraisal of the items in the museum. And as far as I recollect, we don't have a copy of that appraisal anymore, that was lost when the city lost their, their data. But as far as I remember, the, the two most expensive items that we had was a crank of music box and there's a lamp in the front room. Can you, do you remember who the maker is?
No, it, it looks like a Tiffany, but it isn't. Uh, and, and it's a, a very nice piece. There was a lady that used to be associated with the museum and she had an antique store in Wyandotte. Uh, she said her unofficial appraisal, perhaps it was worth eight to ten thousand. But it's only because it's a Tiffany look-alike and could we get that today? We do. And there's another little frog bowl, we're calling it, it's green and it's got a little frog on the front and somehow that's like a five hundred dollar item and, and that's on a, in a cupboard, uh, out of reach, but, uh, most of the stuff I was told by the curator at Flat Rock, a couch in good repair will go for fifty dollars, ours aren't. The frames are broken, it's, the, the fabric is frayed. She said you might get ten to twenty dollars per couch, for instance.
It's not worth keeping all that stuff, it's just
Yeah.
It's a waste of space and
It is.
Yeah, it's time to clean house.
Right, yeah, and that's the issue.
You know, the needs of, of the city and hopefully make it, you know, something that can be simplified, you know.
We have talked, we have talked, uh, in our meeting, a couple of meetings ago about having a, a vintage sale come spring and, and but we need immediate relief. I've looked into storage, can temperature controlled storage places, ten by tens. And then if available, start at a hundred and sixty-five a month and that just seems kind of wasteful too, if we could, if we could advertise, like, like same Jeff said on Marketplace or eBay items for sale, if we, if we could relieve that, that space requirement right now. I, I've tried different antique venues. People that run those venues, they don't call back, they're not interested. I've called the state salespeople, they're not interested in, in helping us, uh, just evaluate. Auctioneers, we were advised by the Flat Rock people, they went with an auctioneer. And yeah, they evaluate, they conduct the sale and then when they divide everything out, you get a pittance.
Right.
Uh, so that was hardly worth the effort. I talked to the fellow at Dearborn and he said there are places that run sales periodically. But that means loading up a truck and hauling the, the stuff out there and, you know, that's, it just seems like the internet is the way to, to work it, uh, and whatever's left over in the spring and have a vintage market even in the backyard. But your idea with a gala?
You gotta be some way to
I, I'm, I'm interested in, in fundraising too, that, that would the priority right now is trying to get that museum open, it's sat closed too long.
Right.
We've got, some exhibits are up and ready to go, um, but it's clear in the space and you, you work around this pile of furniture that's sitting in the dining room, serves no purpose.
Right.
You, you can't move any farther. It, it's a problem.
Right, you need some paint out.
Yes, we do. And, and, and really also that, that program would help us to know what we have. And, and you could put together on paper exhibits when you can see what you actually have in the way of artifacts and what fits. Right now, there's, the cases are full and, and I think very interesting, as a matter of fact. And we talk about telling Trenton's story, but it's the story of the people that made this a community.
All right.
Way back, but even currently, there's some trophies and there's some, uh, well, a bunch of yearbooks. Uh, uh, things that, that people living in this community today would relate to and they gotta see that, they've gotta, they've gotta know what their community was about from beginning to end and their part in it. I, I'm really excited about this, I think we're cutting edge and this is the, the, the direction that museums are going at this time is, is exhibit driven, not Americana.
Right.
Go to Greenfield Village if that's what you're looking for.
Uh, as far as your point, one of the things that goes through, thinking about doing this, maybe offering guided tours of historical spots around town. There's a whole lot of things to take a look at. Right now, you know, it's kind of like spitting into the wind.
Where do you start?
Yeah, you know, so, uh, we're trying to focus on the museum first so we can get ourselves reopened. And then we'll go from there, you know, hopefully we can take the money we have in our account to redo the carriage shed. Uh, by the way, just so that you know, when, when you look to date on the carriage shed, the carriage shed was built in nineteen seventy-five by volunteers at no cost to the city.
Right.
So, uh, that might be a, a way that we can work it, we can, the carriage shed, who is by
Volunteers, yeah.
Maybe somebody volunteering material. Something that, that we could maybe do is approach something like those with our home people and see if they will donate, that's all, and then we'll, you know, so that, you know, we can get things going. There's something we haven't explored that is
Well, and you got N A Mans in town too, Mans. I mean, they've always been very philanthropic and very good to the community, somebody could, we can talk to them, oh, Mans Company.
Right.
So, you know, that, that's our, our, our plan. I think, you know, once we get off and bone and we get maybe a year or two down the road, I think you'll see a lot more of Trenton's history.
Good.
Like I say with our newsletter. We're gonna put it in schools and we're gonna put it in some of the businesses and all of the libraries.
You can do some historical carriage rides through Trail Town.
Yes. I use it for some things, right?
Did you have any?
No, I, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna rattle, but
No, no, you're okay. All right, Keltman, Priggy.
Yes, I have a question and a suggestion. Question is, I've seen all the numbers, but to get where you wanna go, what's it gonna cost you?
Right now, we don't know, you know, we, we got an estimate for, for a split unit for heating and cooling and that was like last year.
Yeah, I saw it in here, I just didn't know, I don't see a grand total, so I was just trying to see.
None of these are current.
The door is up there, a thousand dollars. Uh, the window's gonna be like four hundred dollars. We're gonna partition off one of the doors, uh, the carriage doors. But we're gonna keep the carriage doors so it gives it that carriage look. At the other door, we're going, we're hopefully going to be able to afford maybe like a patio door or something to put in there. And that way, we have larger items to take in and out of the, out of the carriage shed, we'll have access to it. But one of the things that's important too is that we need to get with our, our security people and see what we've been doing to upgrade the security of the museum. Uh, the police strongly recommended that we have some video surveillance at the museum. Uh, one of the things I would like to add to it because of what happened to us last year is that we lost our, our heat last year in the middle of winter. And if it wasn't for us just going over there for work day, uh, we probably would have suffered some, some, you know, some broken pipes and some frozen pipes. So to hopefully alleviate that in the future, maybe there's some type of sensor that they can put in there that would monitor the, the temperature of the building and send off an alarm if it reaches down to a certain temperature so that we don't suffer some damage, needless damage from frozen pipes. So those are the things that we're looking at, at doing, but any suggestions, you know?
Well, I, I will tell you, part of the recycling process, I was dealing with the superintendent at Trenton Schools and he was chomping at the bit to take his students, and I'm not sure which age group, whether it was elementary, middle school, high school, to go to that museum. So he's chomping at the bit to go through that museum.
I've spoken to him about that.
So just to let you know. Okay, just to let you know.
So I think to kind of tie things together here, I know that, um, for the most part, I know they're looking for our permission to, you know, a sale of city property. But does anyone have any, I guess, qualms about the de-ascension process? Cause I think it'd probably make most sense if you guys have that list of things, um, to just get that to administration and can go from there in terms of using eBay and setting reserves and things like that, um, but I mean, it's kind of the fine line of, right, going through the whole rigmarole of not wanting to spend, you know, thousands of dollars getting things appraised, but also from that same token, right, not wanting to sell something for twenty bucks that's worth ten grand. But I think based on what you guys have described, that that's for the most part not the case, but, um, I think if, uh, you know, my suggestion, I guess if everyone hears, there's no qualms or anything, would be to go ahead and start getting that together and then we can see what we can do on the, um, you know, that office equipment upgrades, things like that, the catalog programs and, and things as part of their process too. So, um, I'm not sure if anyone had any questions, suggestions, thoughts and stuff on top of that, but Councilwoman Roderick, yes?
I was just wondering, as far as like the HVAC purposes, what's the square feet of the building?
I'm sorry.
Square footage?
Of the carriage shed. It, it's, I, I think, I would say it's equivalent to like a two car garage, two and a half car garage probably. And I don't know what that would
It looks kind of smaller because it has kind of like the, the cake pot look to it, you know, once it goes down for about six weeks. There is a, uh, second floor in, in the carriage shed that the museum is just strictly for, for storage.
And this is just one window that needs to be replaced in the upper level?
Two, a, a window in the upper level and then the window on the first floor uh, is, uh, hopefully be replaced with a door.
Yes, you did say that.
One of, one of the issues that we have, women, the carriage shed now is we have to go into the museum because I don't
Yeah.
So we're hoping that when we revamp everything, that we can get a split system so that we can go to the carriage shed. A lot of times you go to the carriage shed just because somebody gives us an art, an artifact and they want to put it there and then you don't need to go into the museum. But you, you end up having to go into the museum and unlock it and
Deactivate.
We're, we're just trying to simplify things.
Right, right. Um, and then for the, the printer, the scanner and the copier? So basically you can't use the all-in-one type upgraded business version?
As far as the scanner goes, it's been, it is something that we want to get so that, that we can have a high resolution of copy of photographs that are given to us. So that we can blow them up and go, they just don't know.
Right.
But
So you definitely want a scanner that's separate from an all-in-one type printer? Yes. Okay, gotcha.
Size printer. They print the, the padloid sheets. That would allow us to do like brochures and also like posters and that. Looking
Okay, that's what I really wanted to know. So the other ones could be all-in-one type? And then, but the scanner has to be a specific type of scanner?
Yeah, as long as
Okay. Gotcha.
I did sign by the children of computer space out there on West Road and I need four of this surprise, I think what this is, seven hundred dollars for a computer that would make Uh, the only thing additional that you have to buy is kind of like monitor. Very interesting. Similar thing, you know, computers have to be able to handle, you know, it's at least sixteen hundred dollars.
And this list, uh, this cost estimate, this is basically, and the, the estimates that you, you were received in twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so late twenty twenty-one?
A split system.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have, thank you very much, I appreciate you all.
So if they want to go home by the computer and, uh, running the scanner, they have the money to do it right now and they can start categorizing things. And, you know, stuff, couldn't we give them permission to do that?
All right, sorry, I, your, your question is, do we have enough money for the computer?
So they can get started with some of these things like this computer, the scanner, this, and so they can start categorizing things and deciding what they want to get rid of and, you know, documenting all this stuff, can they start somewhere now?
I think it would be helpful.
So, so he, here's, here's what my recommendation would be. If they provided a list of the material they want to get rid of with a, a suggested reserve and it can be as much as a estimate of what the minimum that they think, you know, we can work on getting a post on eBay, sell the stuff, create the room. We've already gotten estimates on the electrical. Um, heating and cooling can't happen, it, it's a sixty amp service, we need to upgrade the electrical. It's gonna be about five thousand dollars. Um, the heating and cooling, I believe, sixty-five hundred?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight hundred, I was even a little optimistic.
Expert, excuse me, came up and gave the estimate. They were going to upgrade the electrical, the additional cost is about two hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars.
Okay, my, my understanding is though Kevin uh, went out and did a site visit with a contractor to do the electrical correctly throughout the building for what you guys asked for with grounded three-pronged plugs. Everything complete, hundred amp or hundred and fifty amp, hundred, hundred amp service. And the pricing right now is five thousand dollars, I mean, I saw the estimate. So Yeah. Right, and do it right, do it one time. I mean, that, that's, in, in, in my opinion, that would be the route to go. We can look at and sort through the computer, uh, things as we go, but I think upgrading the electric so we don't have, uh, a fire hazard or any other issues uh, that we can't support the building would be a great first step. We were able to get it watertight last year. There were still leaks, but those are all taken care of and I There were still leaks, but those are all taken care of and I believe the drywall's been repaired.
It is.
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of, it's kind of baby steps. The the big thing is if they want to create the room, that's fine. You guys, since it's city property, you have to approve the sale of any city property and you're gonna have to take a leap of faith or guesstimate that we're gonna be able to offload what they think is not overly valuable. We're not gonna get fleeced and be on the six o'clock news. You know, we let that dream lamp that, you know, whatever. So as long as you you guys have to do it, eyes wide open, we can do it. I don't know if it'll generate five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars. I have no idea. Don't know. It it it's whatever the market will bear. Then we're at the stage where we can make sure all the other pieces or the the plan comes together, you know, I mean, but the twenty-five thousand dollars that they have and reserves will be quickly gone. Unfortunately, I mean, it's, there's stuff that was postponed from years and years and years and it's gonna take some time to to catch up. Anything that's under four thousand dollars, if we have it budgeted, I I can take care of that, but electrical is gonna have to come back to you guys. Just like any other expense over four thousand dollars. The HVAC, you know, and you guys are gonna know that you're chipping away at the the twenty-five thousand dollars and if, you know, maybe uh, maybe we have.
Use it and then just leave it there.
Pardon me?
I'd rather have us use it and start taking care of that place or it's gonna fall apart like some other things.
It's, it's, I I I agree with you.
It's not twenty-five thousand dollars, it's about four one thousand.
Is that the right number? Last time I looked, it was twenty-five. Karenel.
She's having to bring it with her.
So twenty-four, five, it's almost twenty-five.
Good, you got a raise.
So don't cut yourself short. Take it. Right, so. So just understand the the scope of thing. You guys are only gonna have to really worry about the the bigger ticket items or or, but the main thing is they cannot dispose of property without your permission. So I would anticipate next council meeting. Y'all could have a list.
We're gonna work.
Where you wanna dump this? I shouldn't say dump this. We wanna de-ascension this material and as long as you guys, eyes wide open, know they're gonna give their best estimate of what it should be worth. And we can help them do it through eBay or something. It it's very manageable. It it's better than doing a garage sale. That's my opinion, but y'all gotta approve it, so.
But you gotta ship that.
Yeah, shipping might be.
And they do take a slice. You'll never get that. So in my, I I deal in antiques and I should just, yeah, maybe. I mean, I I still have things on Marketplace that haven't sold. eBay, it it takes a long time to get interest in that stuff and to move it. And again, like I said, you have to ship it. I I think, well, and Dumichelle's actually does in-person complimentary appraisals. So maybe you take, and it's five per person, so if you want to take the lamp, let's say, or the items that you have a feeling that are more valuable, take those, take a field trip to Dumichelle's. I've, I feel like if you want to do this quicker, there's also Schmitz antiques and Yips Lanny. I don't know if you've contacted them, but Chuck's a friend of mine. He'd probably, he came down to our house one time to look through things. So I I think auction is probably your best bet or, and and Chuck will tell you, like, he he told us, okay, this is junk, this, this we can take. And they'll take it for you and and sell it. And then the junk stuff we put in a garage sale. So, you know, and like you said, that Victorian furniture, it costs like five thousand dollars to reupholster a a couch. So if you have a couch, it's not in good standing, you know, you're not gonna get a lot for it. So I mean, if if you do Marketplace and eBay, it's gonna take forever. If you do an auction house, it's gonna go faster. There's even the place called Michigan High Bid Auctions and they come out and take pictures and post it. It's a local thing. And that, you know, so what I, what I feel like you should do is maybe separate what you think is valuable. Take it to Dumichelle's, get your free appraisal. What you don't think is, and you know, I if I'd be happy to help if you'd, you know, maybe I noticed something or just have eyes on it like, yeah, and you're not gonna, you know, I see this all the time. You're not gonna get bucks for that or something like that. So, you know, separate them into two piles. Do have an antique estate sale or somebody in the spring citywide? You can even have people donate items to support the museum and keep the profits, you know, the girl scouts, boy scouts do that all the time. And then the other stuff you sell at auction, you're gonna, you know, eBay takes this, takes a cut anyway too. Plus you gotta find people to, you know, you'd have to ship it. That costs like at least fifteen dollars just to ship maybe even a phone at, you know, at this day. So it's not cheap to ship, so. Yeah, cause people aren't gonna pick it up locally, so. And then the other thing I would say is what I don't, I see a lot of numbers here, but I don't really see them like we do in our budgets, you know, we have like, this is what I need in twenty twenty-three, this is what I need in twenty twenty-four. You know, if I saw something to help me understand all of these numbers, I see them like three or four different times in here. I don't know if it's the same number or a different number. Prioritize what you need. Tell us how much that is. It sounds like what I've gotten then is that we're prioritizing five thousand dollars for electrical, sixty-seven hundred dollars for heat, maybe a thousand dollars for a window. So like, tell me upfront, like, what do you need other than to clear space? That's one issue, but then, like, what what's the next, you know, thing that you need and in priority? You know, if if you need that computer to de-ascension the stuff, then maybe that's our first priority or, you know, like, I don't, I see a lot of numbers that are just kind of all over the place. So it's hard to understand exactly what you need and when. So that's the other thing I would suggest is to organize the numbers. And chron, you know, make it chronological of, okay, we need this done first, then we need this, then eventually I I can do the markers. Now, in the meantime, yes, Trail Town. We already have a free tour of the city, which is a historical tour through Trail Town and, you know, it would, it's obviously a great location for Trail Town. It's a, it's a major thing that we put on our Trail Town brochure for people to stop and visit. So to integrate into, you know, maybe with Parks and Rec to have activities there. You know, when you host an ice cream social, ask for donations or, you know, I whatever it takes, you know, to build up your funds and maybe even to purchase some other items, but I'd like to see more, you know, stuff going on at that location, cause, you know, other than my my son visited for Boy Scouts and we just, we don't interact with the place very much. So I think people need to come and do things there. And even if the building's not open, you can host things in the summer on the grounds and coordinate with somewhere in time and host events and, you know, and and working with Trail Town and the historical markers. I know City Beautiful wants historical markers too. They want them in the Rotary Park and, you know, so there's so many combined efforts that we can put ourselves together with and and get these things done. But that's, that's. It might be the same one. I know Healthy Down River, Healthy Trenton used it and then Trail Town piggybacked on that to use it. And so it's on an app and it takes people to all the different historical places in town. So it's free, free for people to use.
Wendy, we we're also trying to get a website up and going and I've been talking to Eric Hoshaw who is connecting with the IT company that the city uses now. Our intention is to to put together videos that can be put on that website. But there's ADA requirements too, that there's a video that could be on a website that people could.
Do a virtual tour.
Yes, a virtual. And and that's kind of been in the works.
Well, I think too, like, for example, did you, you guys put out the historical blurbs for us each month, correct?
Yes.
That's I, but then I post them on social media and then people react to them. But you also have a Facebook page that that stuff doesn't get posted on. So, you know, you using social media, I don't know if people are gonna go to the city website to look at, look it up. I mean, you have to, you know, City Beautiful Commission's really done a lot with social media and getting interest and people involved and you know, you you can't sit back and wait to, for people to find it on a, on our, but it's a, you can definitely tag to it. You're like, okay, here's our social media account, you know, do Instagram photos, take a picture of yourself at one of these historical sites. And then it could link back to a website where people can learn more information.
Hopefully, that there would be a link on the city site that would connect to our our website and we would keep that updated. It's been very difficult to keep the Facebook page current.
Yeah, you need a person that constantly, you need an administrator for that, so, yeah.
And we lost that person, so.
How many, how many members do you have on your commission right now?
Active, seven.
Yes, and how many are allowed? Is it nine?
Nine.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And so I think just kind of summarizing things here. The three big takeaways here, just kind of what, obviously, we can't vote on anything, but just for conditional go ahead here would be making sure no one has any qualms about beginning the de-ascension process of some of these items. Starting to whittle away away at the smaller ticket items administratively in terms of, you know, picking off some of the low hanging fruit and things that don't necessarily need our approval. But then going forward to over the next, you know, few months, probably anticipating seeing some quotes and bids for the insulation, the electrical, heating and cooling, all that good stuff. Is there is any comments, questions or anything from anyone in addition to that? All right, anything else from you all?
I have a question. Who do you see getting the the quotes for this particular jobs? Is is that something we can do or does it come out of city department somewhere, like for the heating, cooling, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that'll have to get more formalized through through the city. It can't just be just you guys, but yeah, it's our DPS will be able to help with that. Cool. Well, not seeing anything else from you guys or anything like that. I just want to say thank you for all this. I know it's no small lift, to put it lightly, but very excited about the vision you guys have and I think it'll be a very cool place.
Oh, I think so. And I think it'll be a destination. There's a day it will be.
Absolutely. Cool. Thank you, guys. And I guess we'll look for a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-nine. Move support, moving and supported, seeing no further discussion, adjourned at eight thirty-nine PM.